It's becoming, as I said at the last meeting, it's becoming a habit that we pretty much have a presentation before every meeting, which is one of the best things that we do here on the council. Tonight, we have to honor some Girl Scouts for being awarded a Silver Award. And what I'm going to ask at this point, Councilman Gedderman and Councilwoman Christopher are going to head down to the podium. If you want to stand up, Girl Scouts, stand up. There you go. Don't be shy. And actually, if you want to, you can come down and I promise neither one, they're good people.
Okay, so tonight we're honoring the Girl Scouts. Five Girl Scouts that were receiving their Silver Award. Silver Award is a pin. They have previously received their pins at a previous ceremony, but their awards and certificates were not ready yet. So we're doing that, doing that tonight. Five Girl Scouts are Asia Benoit, Madison Bond, Emily Corvo, Ryan Dupre, and Courtney Thorpe. And their troop leader is Melissa Thorpe. And as I call your name, you can come up and get your award. Asia Benoit. Asia and Madison worked on school safety. Madison. Emily Corvo. Ryan. Courtney Thorpe. The Silver Award can only be done in groups of up to four, so these girls split into two groups of two and three. This is the second highest achievement a Girl Scout can earn. Only the Gold Award is higher. For Silver, they are required to complete a journey together as a troop. They learn about climate and share their findings with younger elementary school students. Their Silver Award projects then had to be 50 hours spent on a topic of their choice to better their community. Asia and Madison worked on school safety. Courtney, Ryan, and Emily focused on making sure girls had equal access to softball and baseball fields in town. Previously, only boys had lights on their fields. They also worked on equipment swap to ensure equal access of play to both baseball and softball players. Congratulations to all of you.
You can't sit down yet. All the people who came here tonight are going to want pictures. So you're going to have to make a first orderly line and let mom and dad and whoever else you have here tonight take plenty of pictures. Congratulations. Do you have plans for the Gold Star yet, or is that in process?
They're like, what?
Yeah, they're like, no. That's okay. That's the answer.
We're hoping they can continue because not too many earn their Gold Award. But we're hoping that a few of them, some of them are trying to continue.
Okay. Well, good luck. Congratulations. Thank you for helping the community. We really appreciate it. We understand that you probably have nothing better to do than to sit through a council meeting and see how your local government runs. But if you need to leave and go home and do homework, we understand. So don't feel bad if you have to leave.
Wait a minute, that could be part of the Gold Award.
Yeah, that's right. We'll create our own Gold Award, right?
I think it converts from one hour to like...
Yeah, we could round up. But thank you again. Congratulations. Thank you for being here. Good luck on all your future endeavors. Thank you.
Here's the report of Discover Plainville Steering Committee that was involved in looking at the development of the tagline. So over the summer, the Discover Plainville Steering Committee surveyed the community to gather feedback on the town's branding and marketing initiative. The anonymous 18-question community survey was designed to help define the Plainville brand with a logo and tagline. A total of 388 individuals responded to the survey. The survey results for the town of Plainville Branding and Marketing Initiative highlight the following: We find that most respondents were aged between 45 and 54, that was actually 20%, and 35 and 44 represented 19% of the respondents. The town was or is frequently described as, quote-unquote, "friendly", that was of 56% of the respondents. Family-oriented, 52% of respondents, and growing, as 46%. In that process, popular taglines also included Crossroads of Connecticut, with an overall rating of 3.21. Hidden in Plain Sight, 3.07 average rating. And when asked to choose a favorite tagline, Hidden in Plain Sight received 31.5% of the votes, and so did Crossroads of Connecticut. So within the deliberations within the committee, and obviously there are two members of the council present for those discussions. It was pretty robust, a pretty good discussion around, you know, what is about Plainville that, you know, people identify with. History came up a lot, and again, as I mentioned, you know, friendly, family-oriented, growing, and so forth. So with a lot of comments, I think, tied to not losing, you know, the historical perspective. But we kind of coalesced and had a consensus around Hidden in Plain Sight for a couple of different reasons, I think. One of which was, you know, the phrase of, you know, you've really got a hidden gem there. So it's not without saying that, it's more, you know, Plainville and Plain Sight. We were right there at the crossroads, which is another thing that we discussed about whether or not that was already taken or used by other communities. And so we came back to Hidden in Plain Sight as a recommendation. So that's what it is. It's merely a recommendation for the council to, you know, direct us, myself and the committee, if that's okay. You know, we'll go forward with that. It's merely a tagline. And, you know, if you feel as a group that you'd want more surveying or you want to match up, say, the two top ones and go back out. I mean, that's possible. I could take back to the Steering Committee and talk about that. But they were, it was unanimous in terms of the group selecting this with their recommendations to the council. And then the next step would be to take that tagline, if approved, and then develop a logo around that. So, you know, pause there. But it is an item under new business to move forward with that. Let me open up for any questions on that subject.
Any questions or comments? Yes?
The only comment I have is the Plainville Coalition Positive Use Development brings in a company, it brings in a, I mean, a representative from a company called Hidden in Plain Sight. Every year, and it shows parents what to look for in their child's bedroom, you know, bathing, whatever. I just, I don't know. It's an issue.
Yeah. I don't know. We haven't gotten that far, but your point is well taken. And I don't know that it's trademarked or not.
That's my question.
And I think that's the question we have to...
Any other comments or questions? Anyone who was on the committee, anything you want to add?
And it might be, to your point, Councilman, it might be that, I always thought it was, you know, that none of the tagline is Plainville. Plainville, Hidden in Plain Sight. So maybe that's the modification that has to be done in terms of the tagline. If it is in conflict with someone other product approval, that might be trademarked.
Okay. Everybody's good? All right. Next.
Item number two, I just wanted to bring the council up to date. A brief update that, as you know, KBA Castle Booze Architects was selected for the project as architects for the project. And my office will be working with the town attorney to get the contract signed with them to proceed with their first task of preliminary design. And the Capital Projects Building Committee will soon begin the process for issuing an RFQP, which is Request for Qualification/Proposal. The state likes to see it separated in terms of sort of like a two envelope type process. So that's what we're working our way through on that process. But that would be the next step. And then, you know, discussions around having a goal to get the construction manager app rest with the guaranteed minimum price and bring that process to light early so that we can try and gear up both the architect and the construction firm to collaborate. Because the more time they have together to talk about, you know, the supply chain and sourcing things, and they only mean, you know, after we've sorted through the whole COVID debacle, if there are still some, interestingly enough, still some interesting things like component parts, electrical component parts that are still hard to find. And that, in any case, gets them in the room to try and collaborate for better numbers and better timing, better scheduling, and so forth. So it comes highly recommended. And, yeah, so we're, you know, we're moving along. The architect's in place, working on the contract. Get that language settled and then go out with the RFQRP for construction management. Please move along.
All right. Any questions or comments regarding the middle school project? All right.
Okay. Item three is update on the White Oak redevelopment project. Manafort-Nimport Realty Team continues working with the town on the future redevelopment of the former White Oak property. The group presented their updated conceptual plans to the town council on August 19th meeting, with those unanimous support for Manafort-Nimport Realty Team as presented. The developer presented the updated conceptual development plans to the EDA at their September 19th meeting. After short deliberation, the EDA voted to unanimously reaffirm the previous recommended tax benefit for the updated conceptual plans for development. These benefits will be applicable to both redevelopment, existing structures, and new construction on site. Tax abatement will be a five-year step-down benefit, 100%, 80%, 70%, 60%. And beginning at issuance of a certification, certificate, excuse me, of occupancy from the building department for each individual structure. So to keep this project moving forward, the town council will need to amend the MOU reflecting the updated conceptual plans to the responsibilities of each party. This language has been approved by the town attorney. And there is an item under new business requesting that town council review and formally ratify future tax benefit terms and approve the town manager to execute the MOU amendment document with Manafort-Nimport Realty. So this is, you know, that process just, if you've gone through both meetings and the EDA to understand that the project has changed. And we understand those changes and that doesn't miss the mark in terms of the original goal and objective to redevelopment. I'll pause and...
Okay. Any follow-up questions? I know we talked about this the last couple meetings, but... All right. Our favorite, Whiting Street.
Yes, unfortunately, yes. I have lots to report. And the section of Whiting Street from North Street to East Street has been milled and paved. The section is complete, other than the painting of the pavement markings. The progress of reconstruction activities on Whiting Street from Broad Street to North Street have been hindered and delayed as a result of Aquarion's water main relocation work between Newtown Avenue and South Avenue. And that's what's tripped us up. You know, it's unfortunate. We, I believe, gave certainly enough notice that we were, you know, barking on this project. And I don't know if it's a manpower issue. To some extent, when I called and reached out, it was told that it was a problem within the reconnection and testing. They had a problem isolating the high bacteria count in the line somewhere. And they cannot proceed unless they have a clear passing grade. And so, whatever reason, they had a lot of difficulty pinpointing that. That was delayed quite a bit. So it's estimated that the remaining water construction activities, including restoration of their trench, will take at least three weeks to complete, if not longer. Remaining construction activities in this section by the town's contractor is estimated to be additional three-plus weeks before this section could be ready to consider milling and paving. It is thus unlikely that this section will be paved and completed before the winter shutdown. So it is a project that will continue over into the spring, and that's when they'll hopefully be able to do that. The project, as I said, was projected to be completed by November 30th, and that began to be done back in July. And so the revised construction schedule is the bottom of the section of Whiting Street between Broad Street and Newtown Avenue. And the section between South Street and North Street will be completed on or before November 30th, 2024. The section between Newtown Avenue and South Street will likely be completed next spring, sometime hopefully before April 30th, 2025. That's the unfortunate news.
Is there, once they're done, like, I understand it might, it'll probably be too late to do a complete milling and paving, but there will be some type of paving done to...
Yes, right.
At least get rid of the washboard effect driving down that street. That would be nice.
Yeah. I would, just to reconfirm with the engineer, but that's my understanding, right? That they'll have a course, a single course, I guess, down. And it's that, again, they're going to have to finish. And the issue is in the timing. They can do the construction. It's the asphalt plant's closing. And, you know, after, you know, whenever the temperature is, and they deem that once they're closed, they're closed. And you don't really want to be paving in November, already mid-early November, December. You don't want to be doing that. So, you know, pause, hit pause button, put the project on hold until you come back in the spring and then do the final, final thing.
Is there, I don't want to say penalty, that's not the right word, but, you know, the fact that, you know, it's not costing the town any more money because of this delay.
It may cost the town.
Or if it does, like, is there any, do we have any avenue to kind of say, hey, you know, you put us in this situation, can we...
John and I, the town engineer, John Bosse and I, are looking at reviewing that as we head in to try to figure out exactly where we're going to finish or what we calculate as that finish, and then what's left to argue through that process.
So try to quantify that number if possible. Any other questions and comments?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Hurley.
On this repair of Whiting Street, are they going to, when they hit Broad Street, are they going to do anything about the intersection itself? Yeah. When you come on Broad Street and you go to make a right onto Whiting Street, that, that part is all roughed and...
Yes. Yes. And to your point, yes. I believe you were clear when you mentioned that. And talking with John, that was one of the extensions that we did. That if we're going to be in and that close, that we go through. Instead of, instead of Broad, you know, Whiting Street up, you know, too broad, we were going to go left and right to sort of fan through the intersection and to get that very spot that you're talking about. The front, the company arm that is so uneven and rippled.
Yeah, it's a very, very bad intersection.
Yeah, I just unfortunately can't remember. I can get you the number, but I can't remember how far down Broad Street we were going to go. But certainly long enough to correct the problem. And probably at this point, meeting up with what the utility and gas companies doing right just after that.
They're actually working in that area.
Yeah. Yeah. So one way or the other, you know, they might, they might even take us off the hook by doing it. We'll check their, we'll check their work and then we'll make sure it's up to standards and we'll either do it, you know, before the close, you know, before the close of project in April.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it will be addressed. Yeah, it was in the plan and will be addressed.
Mr. Chairman. South Main Street turning into Norton Park needs some repair. And if you turn it into Norton Park, you get the same effects that you are speaking about.
South Washington.
South Washington.
Yeah. Yeah, that's bad.
And I would be so bold to say we should probably go around town and check other areas doing maintenance work.
To be honest with you, it seems like wherever they've done utility work, they're not doing a good enough job fixing it.
I totally agree.
Fixing the trenches. Yes. And if Aquarion's going to leave Whiting Street, washboard effects through the winter, that's not acceptable. That's just...
Yeah, there's a number of utility operations underway. And, you know, just the disturbance of the road, it's how they repair and leave the work that they've done. And I agree 100%, and that's all we've been working on.
Is there a process? Is that expected by, like, John Bosse? Is that going to give us a seal of approval?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions? And just since we brought up Broad Street, just any ETA? I'm assuming they're going to stop digging the road up. I mean, I'm very happy we're improving the infrastructure of the town, but, you know, I have gotten a couple calls about Broad Street. Even one of my kids is complaining every other day. It's, you're right, it's Olivia.
And I can never remember who it was later.
But no, it's, but no, is there, do they give us any updates as to how, when they'll be done? You know, are they on schedule? Do we get that information?
Yeah, John does, and I'll have to follow up with him. But I think they were slightly behind schedule and then trying to wrap up. I mean, again, for their purpose, our purposes, at some point, you know, if you can't leave the road open, right? So it's got to be, you know, compacted and, and so the asphalt, you got to get it done before the asphalt plant is closed. And again, that's not our call, but it's a weather call. And so, you know, it's going to be November 1st. Or maybe they sometimes, if there's a mile, they can stretch it. And they try to, you know, do that when they can. But this, again, projects all over the state that are in the same...
And just, you know, specific to Broad Street, even if we can get some idea when they're going to finish or get to the point where they're not blocking the street off anymore, we can, you know, post it social media-wise, just so the community has a sense of how much longer we're going to be, I don't want to say putting up with this, but, you know, like I said, it is important that we're improving our infrastructure. I'm sure there's some pretty old pipes down there, but...
Hundred-year-old. Yeah. Very old, 100-year-old in some cases.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All right.
Item, sorry, we're on item five, road salt. So on an annual basis, obviously, you know, during our winter weather operations in the town of Plainville's roadways department utilizes both treated and non-treated road salt. Non-treated road salt is simply rock salt without any organic performance enhancers for de-icing. It is most effective in relatively warmer conditions, temperatures 25 degrees Fahrenheit and above. Typically, treated road salt includes an organic performance enhancer for de-icing. And it's most effective in colder conditions when it is 25 degrees and below. So we have the treated and the non-treated. And so there are two items under new business requesting that the town council award bid 2025-10, the non-treated road salt, Morton Salt Inc. of Chicago, Illinois, under state contract number 20PSX0085 in the amount of $67.90 per ton, not to exceed a total of $54,352. And a second bid, 2025-11, treated road salt, Morton Salt Inc. of Chicago, Illinois, under the council regional bid of number 765 in the amount of $87.73 per ton, not to exceed a total of $35,092 in two separate bids. So those items are under new business.
And just how do those numbers compare to previous years?
I don't know, but I can find out. My guess is, unless, I defer to Andy, but I think my impression is that they've been pretty, pretty stable.
Wow.
Wow. And knowing Andy's got more to say because he's in close contact with purchasing councils and how we do it.
Yeah, the DOT contract for non-treated road salt is the same contract as last year. So that's the same price we paid last year. The price from the CROG bid for treated road salt is actually about $10 or $11 less per ton than last year. That's just because Morton Salt wanted to make sure they owed the lowest bid and gave a better deal this year. So we're actually getting a pretty good deal on treated road salt this year. Yeah.
Okay, excellent. Anybody with any questions or comments regarding road salt, treated or untreated? All right. Can't go, can't go a meeting without talking about sewers, so just leave this edition.
Yeah, so a brief, a brief update on sewer manholes for the Route 177 project involves raising and repairing up to 29 manholes along the route following a recent paving job by the state of Connecticut. Some of the main manholes are recessed or exposed, requiring them to be brought up to grade. The work will include cutting out and raising each manhole, installing new frames and covers, and coordinating those details for traffic management. The goal is to ensure that manholes are properly adjusted to align with the new road surface. Water pollution control requests using Prime Electric, the lowest quote on the state DOT contract. Prime Electric is expected to begin the work in April 2025. This project is partially funded by DOT, which will reimburse up to $1,600 per manhole. And the remaining cost will be covered by the water pollution control fund. There is an item under new business to award bid 2025-12, sewer manholes to Prime Electric LLC of Norwich, Connecticut, under state contract number 24PSX0243 in the amount of $39,150. That item is under new business.
And do we, do we have an idea, like, the 29 manholes, what section of 177 does that cover? Do we know that? Like, that's not the whole set of Plainville, is it?
I thought it was from...
If you don't know...
West Main to all the way to the Farmington line where they recently did...
Where they recently were doing the work? Okay.
I just, the question I just, I don't have for you is if that's going to be a total number of manholes or is it just a number that we have to repair to bring up to grades? Not, maybe not every manhole needs to be adjusted, but 29 of them.
Okay.
Pretty big number.
I can tell you some that don't need to be repaired.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. Yes, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else with any questions regarding the manholes, manhole covers? All right. Financial dashboard time.
Yes, sir. I'll start with the expenditures, the total town expenditures spent through 9/30, September 30th, 2024, $19,936,194. That represents a percentage expended of 27.69%. And that is under the two-year average of 32.05. So a note that I have for you, and I'll go through this separation of expenditures. On the general government side, we have expended $8,217,609. See, that represents 30.77%. And that is under the two-year average of 42.29% significantly because of the timing of a general obligation bond payments coming off the books. So that's why the middle box there for the general government is so much lower than the two-year average versus the Board of Education expenditures were right in mind, actually just running a little bit under their two-year average as well, but not compared to the general government budget. And that's the difference, is because of the maturing bond and the payments coming off the books. So the Board of Education has spent 25.88% and their two-year average is 26.01%. So again, it's... So again, running just slightly under their two-year average. So expenditures to date at this point of September thirtieth, right, right in line. The next page is on the overtime, police and dispatch overtime. To date, have spent a hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. The two-year average is a hundred and thirty-seven, zero sixty-eight. So it's just running, just a year under that two-year average, which is good. By about a thousand dollars on the overtime budget. Roadways has expended seven thousand three hundred seventy-eight dollars. Their two-year average is seven thousand seventy-nine, so they're slightly over by just about three hundred dollars on their expenditures. Building and grounds expenditures, twenty-seven thousand fifty-nine to date. Their two-year average is thirteen thousand eight eighty-four, and that reflects in the two-year average the difference in the balloon festival. So this time next year, we'll have a more accurate, and we'll have two years of bringing back the balloon festival, and you'll see that reflected in the numbers. The hauling for tonnage of solid waste, municipal solid waste, we have, we have disposed in terms of tonnage, one thousand five hundred eighty-four tons. The two-year average is one thousand five hundred twenty, so we're running slightly above the two-year average by sixty-three tons. And we've noticed that we're running under, under the recycling side, and it could just well be that we are throwing some of our recyclings in the garbage. And I don't know that for certain, that is just theory as to why those would be, would be off. But it's certainly a conversation I can have at the next meeting when we discuss municipal waste with the Crystal Resource Recovery Facility. But anyway, not alarming in any way, still right on, right on schedule, not much, much difference in terms of the average tonnage. Next page is on the revenue side, and that looks fine. The revenue is running right in line with expectations. We have received thirty-three million fifty thousand nine hundred seventy dollars through September thirtieth. That represents a percentage received of forty-five point nine one percent. Two-year average is forty-five point two nine percent. So we're just running right in line, just slightly above the two-year average. That is on town total revenue. On current tax revenue budget, the same, they're running right in line, collecting thirty-one million nine hundred eighty-eight thousand three hundred, and represents fifty-eight point eight four percent. The two-year average is fifty-eight point five nine percent. So everything is right in line with where we expect that to be. Next is the general fund, and the top line number there, I again, point your attention to the fact that this is the estimated unassigned fund balance that is unaudited, but it's still a very healthy number at fifteen point seven percent, eleven million three hundred four thousand five hundred eighty-three dollars. So that is a good number, but again, unaudited. So the note is basically to say that even as you see on the paper there in the middle, the budgeted fund balance of one point four, that would all have to be used. That would take us down to nine million eight hundred eighty thousand eight four dollars, but still represents a very healthy fund balance percentage of thirteen point seven two percent. So if there's anything to worry about there, and those are healthy numbers. Next page is, are the, next page is the special revenue funds, beginning with the recreation fund. And to date, their expenditures have been a hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars, represents forty-seven point two two percent, slightly below their two-year average of forty-four point one eight percent. On their revenue side, they received fifty thousand four hundred seventeen dollars, and running slightly below their two-year average on the revenue side, twenty-two point three one percent. The two-year average is twenty-nine point three two percent. Again, this is, I think some of it is just the timing and the fact that we're not fully recovered from COVID and we believe that we're getting very close to the numbers, maybe trending positively. So we'll see that that pairs out the rest of the year. Robinson Airport Fund is also, everything running smoothly there. We're trying to catch up with some of the reimbursements. But to date, they have spent seventy thousand, excuse me, seventy-five thousand seven eighteen. That's forty-one percent at this point, and they have received seventy-two thousand roughly forty-six. So everything is pretty much in line there. With the airport fund, the water pollution control fund also, numbers are in line. They have received, I mean, excuse me, they have expenditures of two million three hundred seventy-eight thousand one hundred sixty-two dollars. That represents forty-seven point eight six percent expenditures. Their two-year average is fifty-three, so they're under that. On the revenue side, they have received six hundred sixty-five thousand three sixty-seven, representing fifteen percent, and their two-year average is thirteen point seven six. So they're looking fine, both under the expenditure side and over on the revenue side. Library Fund also right in line. They have expended two hundred and eighty-eight thousand nine fifty-one. That represents thirty-five point nine percent. Their two-year average is thirty-two point two four. Their revenue, they have collected two hundred thirty-seven thousand two seventeen. Percentage represents twenty-nine point four seven percent received in terms of revenue. Their two-year average is seventeen point nine. And the note that I have is the fact that their investments have done better in the last two quarters. And so, you know, receiving additional revenue here, which is, which is good, a big sign. Again, that's always the wild card for them in terms of how we're invested, circulating. But everything is, is right in line there, nothing, nothing to worry about. And final page are the major projects report on our hikes as we're looking to wrap up there with the installations. We have a couple more, I think, are coming in the, in the works. There might even, yeah, might even be a few more connections that we'll, we'll see, but we'll, we'll finish that out. And we were at over sixty percent, I think I reported at the last meeting with that. The numbers look really good in terms of the connections and installations there. So we're looking to finish that out and update the numbers. And I'll have an update for you next month. The turf maintenance fund, not a whole lot to report there. Their revenue to date is three hundred and twenty-three thousand. Expenditures have been forty-six thousand, so their net project fund balance is two hundred seventy-seven thousand two twenty-two. And again, this is a long-term sort of sinking fund that we're looking to build, build up with the time, in terms of the life cycle of the, of the turf field is expired, and we'll have something in terms of fund balance to apply to that. ARCA funds as well, we're doing fine there. I think some notification, I think, for either November's meeting or December's meeting, just to finish up and clarify where those funds are. As you know, we obligated, and must obligate by December of twenty twenty-four, and they must be spent by December thirty, thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. So I think there's some, not so much accounting, but clarification and accounting to make sure that when the finance director needs to report to the state, we're gonna try and add that to the November meeting so we can clarify where we are in his reporting to the state. Whiting Street, again, that's going to be continued and extended until the springtime finish, so that will remain open until we finish that up. And then the road bond is also something that we'll need to discuss in future meetings with respect to the next issuance, and that's tied to the school bonds and going to market with that. That is another discussion, because that has come to the end of its allocation, if you will, with respect to that, effective in using those funds for road projects. And those funds are nearly extended until the... That's it?
All right, question?
Getting back to recycling, being under?
Yeah.
Probably because they doubled the bottle deposit. A lot more people are returning their cans of bottles instead of putting it recycling. I don't like that.
That's a more optimistic outlook than I had.
That's actually what I'm doing.
I like that. I'll go with that. I'll go with that, thank you. Yeah, it may very well be a factor, for sure.
And just real quick, the ARCA funds, I, it's amazing that we're already at the deadline. I guess I remember when we first opened the fund, and it was like, oh, we got plenty of time to decide. But as we get towards the end, you know, is it possible we'll have some funds available for something that maybe wasn't on the original list? I know we've been, as we've been going through this, we've moved money, and this, we've moved, you know, we moved this project, we added this project, but the plan is to try to use as much of that as we can, correct? As opposed to returning it back to the...
I think it's, yeah, we're gonna be looking at those numbers, and that's why clarification and or reallocation, if you will, in terms of looking at where those numbers fall, right? And, and that's what we have to get clarification on.
And do we have?
I don't expect it to be all... I mean, we, we, we tried to do a number of different things. So in some cases, I think we've done a good job in not getting overextended, you know, what we wanna do. But it's going, we're not, I don't think there'll be any money that we return, and that would be the goal. Because I think there's a lot of need. So I think we carefully have to look at those numbers and look at the allocation.
Any idea how many projects, I didn't have my list with me, but how many more projects do we have to just identify or approve? I, I know there's not many left. We pretty much, you know, I'd say ninety percent of the projects we've approved already, but...
Yeah, we're, we're pretty close there. If you recall, one of, one of the outstanding numbers and the big number was on the fire side and the ratings. So, you know, we had taken a little bit here and there from that because we weren't quite sure. I was overly optimistic we'd get a grant for that, we did not. And so that's a key factor we've gotta look at, and I think there are two other little smaller ones that we need to look. So maybe three in total, maybe, I think only three that we really have to look at. And that was the biggest one that we need to figure out the allocation for.
Okay.
Left of that and the accounting of that, and what we are.
Well, thank you. Any other questions or comments under the Town Manager's Report? All right, time for happenings.
Awesome. We've got some happenings for you today. So early voting began today at the municipal center, and we'll run through Sunday, November third. Times are posted online and on social media. We'll continue trying to get the word out so folks know what's going on. This is for the general election in November. And if there's any questions or information, you can call the registrar's voter's office. And again, we have some information on social media and on the website. Fault报 pickup will end on October twenty-eighth, so that's next Monday. Anyone who's interested in receiving a collection of fault pickup, they should put in a call to CWPM by this Friday to, to get their call in time for their items for the, for pickup. Leaf collection will begin during the week of October twenty-eighth, so next week, and will go until December seventh. Weather permitting, we ask residents to please rake their leaves to the curb and not onto the street, nor covering any sidewalks, and to do so as early as possible. Grass clippings, sticks and stones will not be collected, and bagged leaves will not be collected either. Residents can bring bagged leaves to the transfer station on grants or land as they like. Again, Roadways is just gonna keep going around town until all the leaves are collected. From the Plainville Public Library, and any information on library programs, you can go to the library website for more information. They have a ukulele class on Saturday, October twenty-sixth. They have a session for families at ten AM and a session for adults and teens at eleven AM, and it's an interactive way to learn the basics of playing the ukulele. The weekly knitting and crocheting social occurs on Tuesdays from ten thirty AM to noon. The candy sushi creations will be on Monday, October twenty-eighth at six PM. This is for students, grade six to twelve. Make Pancake Tacos, a food explorer's event on Wednesday, October thirtieth at two thirty PM. This is for students, grade six to, uh, two to six. Little Scientist on Saturday, November second at ten AM for ages three to five with a caregiver. Registration is required, and this is an opportunity for children to hear a story, watch an experiment, and work on a creative project to learn about early science concepts. The basics of bread making on Saturday, November ninth at twelve thirty PM. This is for students in grade six to twelve, and registration is required. And finally, from the Senior Center, and again, for all information on Senior Center programs, you can call the Senior Center at eight six zero seven four seven five seven two eight. Follow them on social media or go to their website. Scams with Detective DeMore on Tuesday, October twenty-second, that's tomorrow at one thirty PM. Detective DeMore with the Plainville Police Department will give a session presenting the latest and most frequent scams targeting the elderly population. The AARP Smart Driver Course on Wednesday, October twenty-third, from twelve thirty to four thirty PM. The Vaccine Clinic will be on Wednesday, October twenty-fourth, from nine AM to twelve PM. This is by appointment only, or at least they encourage appointments, and you'll be able to get vaccines for flu, COVID, RSV, shingles, pneumonia, et cetera. And again, that's October twenty-fourth. A Halloween Pizza Party is on Friday, October twenty-eighth, from eleven AM to twelve thirty PM. They ask that you do RSVP by October twenty-third. Reservation includes two slices of cheese pizza, a spooky punch, and a festive dessert. Costumes are encouraged. A Lion and Orchard's Trip is on Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, from nine thirty AM to one PM. The cost is six dollars per person, and that's pretty much just for the transportation. And finally, the Annual Holiday Craft Fair is on Saturday, November second, from ten AM to two thirty PM. Free admission, and it is at the Senior Center. You can enjoy strolling through the many craft vendors, the bake sales, the cafe will be open, and then Grandma's Cookies House, plus there'll be some raffles and some other fun as well. So that is all I have for happenings. Does, is there any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
I have just a really quick question with the leaf collection.
Yes.
Would you be able to find out how pine needles fall into that category?
I can follow up.
Okay.
I, yeah, I don't have the answer.
Yeah.
I can follow.
Dominic used to have his guys pick them up, but they're not being picked up now, so I just need to know. I got quite a few pine trees, so...
Certainly.
Yeah, thank you.
I do too, so yes, yeah.
Yeah. It's a mess.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Dave. They're in the road.
All right, any other comments or questions? All right, we can close the Town Manager's Report. We can move now to public comments. At this point in the meeting, anyone who wishes to address the council may do so. Please step forward to the podium, give your name and address. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. The first ring means you have about thirty seconds left. The second ring means you've run out of time. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council this evening? I know there's a lot of, yes. Ms. Loria?
Roberta Loria, Eighteen Perrin Road. Out of the seven town council members, three of you here today were on the town council when the initial vote was made on February twentieth, twenty eighteen, to start this trail process. As you may recall, when, excuse me, as you may recall, you were given a four-hundred-plus-page document that day and told you must vote on it that evening. Numerous residents got up and said to not vote on this. Instead, take the time to truly understand what you're getting the town and residents into. You did not do that. You were led to believe that you can stop this at... You were led to believe that you can stop this at any time. However, if you truly understand how the grant process works, that is not always the case. On September 30th, you listened to a presentation from the DOT about phase three of the trail and they discussed things that were never mentioned, including eminent domain. That presentation was 27 minutes long. You had questions that lasted 40 minutes long. It was only during the question period that the DOT mentioned that there was no way this part of the trail could be done without eminent domain. That should have been a red flag to everyone. At the past town council meeting on October 7th, you unanimously decided to table the vote regarding phase three of the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail. I hope in the past two weeks you were able to read all the information regarding this and truly understand the implication to the residents of our town. I also hope you got everything in writing. Phase three of this trail is now item two under Old Business. We are asking you, when this item comes up, to make the motion to deny this phase as it is. Force it back to the DOT explaining to them what we want the vision to be, not what they think we should have. There's nothing wrong with bringing this down Northwest Drive and using Route 10 where it can be successful for everyone, especially our Plainville businesses.
All right, thank you. Excuse me as I almost cough, but anyone else wishes to address the council this evening? Anyone else? All right, we will close public comments. And we now can move to Old Business, item 10. The first item that is, that has been tabled was our amendment to the Plan of Conservation and Development. Do you want to share a couple things before we open it up for?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First and foremost, that Mark DeGoe is present here for us tonight to try and guide and clarify and, and whatever direction the council wants to go, but also provide and should have at that, to, it's, the, just a brief memo explanation from Mark about the statutes guiding the adoption or amendment of the plan of development also requires that we post notice on the town's website. And that we would obviously take care of that, but just wanted to bring that to our attentions as well. And there were, you know, two separate applications as part of this, this process, and I think there was some question around, you know, the timeline and, and so I think that might be a starting point for Mark maybe to, to kind of reiterate and clarify, Mark, if you would mind, to, again, explain the statute and, as I understand the languages, that we're not so much the body that approves, because we don't, it's a P and Z issue, and that we nearly, well, the council either endorses or rejects, and that, that's essentially it. Really, I kind of set it up where there might be a third option, it's not really a third option of, of sending comments. Those comments and/or recommendation would come in either the, either the.
Approval or.
Endorsement or reject. Yeah, and so now, you know, the council has the ability, if they, they choose to, to set a public hearing, I'm not sure the council feels that's necessary to do, but that's within there, and, and I think that came into play to try and figure out, you know, how does that affect the timeline and, and how far and where does this go? So I think that's where I think Mark can recap and, and reiterate that process and maybe that would be our starting point as to how you want to proceed.
Thank you, Mark, for being here again.
No, don't worry. It's just great to be back.
I'll tell you, we're learning a lot in the last couple meetings. I, myself, I certainly learned a lot more about the conservation and development.
So we, we do know the difference between the acronym of P O C D and P D D. So what we're talking about here is a referral from the Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the Plan of Conservation and Development, the P O C D. There are two applications before you, and by law, it's required that the, not a, a referral goes to the town council. So you have 65 days, and you've got that from today, but from the act of the referral. And the town, excuse me, the planning, zoning, it's not open to public hearing within that 65 days as well. So that clock has been started, it's ticking. The public hearing is scheduled to open December 10, 2024. So there are two applications, as I said, the agent and the applicants for one of those proposals that are here tonight, in case you have any questions of them. That is for the North Mountain Road proposal, which involves the Tasso family and their agent, Bill Galski. And I think Mike hit it right on the nose. You, by, by statute, you can either take the, take the information that's been referred to, accept it with no comment and send that back to the commission, reject it with no comment and send that back to the commission. That's for, the leaf do that twice and/or accept or reject with comments. I think it's that simple.
All right, so now I think it's time for the council to express how much they've learned in the last couple meetings, but why don't we go with some questions or comments from the council at this point?
So the timeline, you know, that I've, that you just referred to, do we, we do not need to make a decision tonight?
You do not.
Okay. Because I know there may still be some questions and, and discussion.
It's an opportunity that the council, you know, has. If there's no action, it'll be, it'll be considered no comment.
Right, I saw that.
So it's, it's however you choose to proceed. Just that we would need to comment, you know, before December 10th.
Right, yeah, and there's a public hearing on, at that.
That's, that's when the hearing opens.
That time. Just wanted to be clear on that. I know I had asked Mike even earlier today to confirm that.
Okay. All right, any other comments or questions?
Well, I have some questions on, on both of those.
Keep going.
I don't know if that's okay. Okay, I'll start with the, with the first one, Mark. And I know some of this is, is repeating myself at the last meeting, but I just wanted to make sure, on the, you know, the northeast quadrant, that all the environmental bases are covered, so to speak. So, you know, my list is, you know, are the water courses and the wetlands are all being preserved?
There's some very minor wetland impacts based on the current, well, the last concept plan that I reviewed, they're extremely minor. There may be one crossing and there may be some upland review area impacts, which essentially are areas within 100 feet of a map, correctly. Not sure about the crossing, I think they've done a pretty good job of forecasting. They've actually revised the plan from its initial conception to utilize as much of these, those, they, to avoid some of those.
And the headwaters of the Quinipiac?
Right. You know, it's interesting, the headwaters of the Quinipiac River are actually north of this development.
Oh, okay.
And I always thought it was the Lewin Lake.
Okay.
But that sheds, it does eventually shed to the Quinipiac, but it's not the headwaters. Headwaters flow the other way into Farmington and then back to.
Okay, Metacoma Trail is preserved, yeah.
Metacoma Trail's not touched, and we hope to try to convince the parties to maybe find a way to get some trailhead parking and some additional access to the Metacoma Trail. It's a big ask because there are other private property owners involved, but we, we sort of opened the book on that.
Yeah, okay, ridge line and adjacent areas or?
Out of the ridge line.
That was pretty clear on, on the, you guys mapped as much. And then the last question on that is, is there a difference in the open space between what was laid out initially in the P O C D and what is being proposed?
No, the P O C D showed the extreme northeast quadrant as being not open space, but preferred as open space, because there is a big pot of wetlands there. I believe their wetland mapping has shown pretty much the same, and the new proposal still labels that as open space here.
It's a little tricky to, you know, keep comparing the two maps, so I just wanted to show, so there's very little difference in, in the amount of open space.
Well, again, I, I don't think that there's an actual open space, that, that, that plan that you're viewing in the P O C D is not the concept plan. So there will be, there will be open spaces in association with this. There'll be a lot of wetland open space, there'll be a lot of upland review open space, and there'll be other open spaces as well, just by virtue of the layout.
Right.
I've seen some preliminary layouts, but they'll be fine.
There's nothing drastic right now because of the.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Yes? If we were to approve the North Mountain Road project tonight, it still has to go to inland wetland and plan in its own, correct? To answer a lot of the questions.
Yes, the.
What Rosemary Berendi has given us.
Right. So the concept plan is a special exception in both the planning facility. They would then do a zoning map amendment to declare a P D D. They would also have to come up with some text, zoning text changes, zoning regulation amendments to permit the types of uses which may or may not coincide with the uses permitted in the underlying zone. And then in the end, they've got to come in for a site plan, and before they go to site plan, they've got to go for wetlands.
And a public hearing also exists, correct?
Public hearings are all special exceptions in both the map and the regulatory.
I mean, I wouldn't have a problem approving this.
So, because what we are really doing tonight is, we would be endorsing the possibility for the property owner to be eligible to be a P D D.
Correct.
And still, like you just said, it's an extensive process after that. They actually have to apply to be one. We're not approving that tonight.
That's correct.
We're just addressing the eligibility for that.
Yeah, that's true.
So, you know, at this point, you know, for the council, you know, what talk direction, you know, do we have a consensus? Do we want to move forward on one vote of these tonight with the amendment? Do we still have some questions that need to get answered? What direction do we want to go?
Again, I think that the plan and zoning, the inland wetlands, and maybe even the Conservation Commission will have a lot to say about what goes on up there. We're just giving them the authorization to go forward.
That's correct.
I, I don't have a problem with moving forward on the first one tonight.
Okay.
I, I agree. I'm comfortable moving, moving forward on the first, talking about the second.
All right, why don't we talk about, the second is the, what was this, is it 74 East Street?
Yes.
The original Plainville High School building? Any questions or comments?
You know, I, I know, I know. Yeah. You know, I, I did speak at the last meeting too, and I do have some, you know, some real concerns about that, you know, in the interest of historic preservation. Obviously, 74 East Street is the site of the former junior high school, but historically, perhaps even more important is the site of the original Plainville High School, which in about two years is going to be 100 years old. You know, it closes the school in 1992. Then there was, were quite a number of years there where the town struggled to figure out what to do with it, and, you know, Manafort did come forward and they purchased the property and renovated it. And I have to say, I haven't been inside since 1963, but, but certainly the outside is, has been very well maintained since then. And I really, you know, I would hope that they would reconsider demolition of the, of the building. Personally, you know, I think that endorsing the idea of them being eligible to apply for P D D could be a positive thing and, but I think that we do, this one, we're definitely going to want to make some recommended changes that address the preservation of the building and, and also the omission of the mention of demolition within the amendment that I'm really not sure it has to be there for any reason.
It is, it is there.
It is there, yeah.
Yep, yep. He talks about the, the imminent demolition of the, of the building, 74 East Street. So that's the specific language that he's.
The reason I, I don't, you know, for not to get me to move forward tonight is I think we have to work on that language. And we wanted to take it any longer than our November 18th meeting, which we probably, most likely, we're going to take a vote a little while, which will be our, our next meeting. But it is a very important historic building and also wish to point out that, you know, what we're addressing here is an amendment to the Plan of Conservation and Development, which has other sections that addresses, address historic preservation. And there's a section under community character that specifically is titled Preserve Historic Resources. Also, I noticed that in the, the section on the plan district, development district, it actually mentions the purpose of a P D D and it lists several things, one of which is result in a development that demonstrates a hard regard for design and that is compatible with the historic, cultural and geographic qualities of Plainville. I think that's important because it's part of the very plan that we're addressing in this and that I think what we come up with should be, you know, as consistent with that as possible. Also noticed in our branding survey, I was happy to know when I reviewed the, the results of that, the high priority that people place on making history part of Plainville's brand. So I think that was very compelling as well. I've said enough.
So that, that is part of your purview would be to send your recommendations like that back to the PCC?
Yeah. We're sending this to P D D, and say this is, that isn't our, and, you know, as, as you point out in your letter to, you know, town council, we have no role in the application for demolition, yeah.
Well, hopefully the PCC listens to you. The applicant does have, we discussed this the last time, they do have ongoing rights that, you know, there are processes that, that can be used to file objections and perhaps take, you know, take exception with the demolition.
But, you know, I think that, once again, as part of the plan, that we should really be able to recommend, you know, that future plans do, do everything possible to preserve the building.
Okay. I'll just hear it.
Mr. Chairman? If we make this motion, do you want to make it now or with all the motions there? Well, let's, I, let's get a consensus on what direction the council wants to go forward with. I'd like to just, I don't know if anyone else has any questions or comments? You know, I would just like to say, you know, generally speaking, I, I think we need to pass the amendments. You know, certainly my, and I don't think issue is the right word, but clearly with the 74 East Street building, you know, it holds a significant historical value in town and certainly, I'm not trying to tell an owner of a property what they can do and can't do with their property, but I think it's, it needs to be, I think we do need to add some comments to that motion when we do actually make the motion and vote on it because that is significant building in town. It, it's going to, it does hold historical value. It's something that's going to be, people are going to understand or they're going to pay attention to this. It's going to be a, a high-profile project or what have you. You know, my, my attitude is, you know, certainly we can move forward tonight. I think on the first amendment regarding 74 East Street, I do think I would like some, wait till the November 18th meeting, just so I can maybe get a consensus, we can draft up some comments that we can add with the motion on the 74 East Street property so that, you know, as it moves forward to the other bodies, that they at least understand what we're, what our concerns are, you know, recognizing that, that the property owners do have rights and that, you know, we're not necessarily trying to get in the way of that, but they're, you know, this is a special.
I think we would agree with you on that one, Chris. It was referred to the motion on North Mountain Road.
Yeah, I, I, I'm fine, you know, I'm fine moving forward with the North Mountain Road part tonight. I, I would imagine that we would just take that one off the table tonight and we can make the motion, but, you know, I, I, it sounds like we're looking to approve it, so we would, you know, then make the motion to approve. While we would just, if we're not ready for the 74 East Street, the understanding that we will take it up November 18th and that, that will just remain on the table for now. Did I summarize that?
Yeah.
Other than going way longer than I needed to?
No.
Okay.
And the motion we're going to agree on is motion A on this, I'm assuming?
Yep.
You know what I mean? Well, we'll just, yeah.
Take it off the table.
We do.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to take it off the table. The motion options for North Mountain Road.
All right, so we have a. All right, so we have a motion to take off the table, the motion options for North Mountain Road, a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that is now off the table. And I just want to check with the town attorney that we're not, no red flags are flying?
I won't speak up if I.
No, okay, good. I know sometimes you're shy, I understand, but. All right, so anyone care to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Good, Councilman Underwood.
Motion to endorse the entire plan for the North Mountain Road proposed amendment to the 2019 Plan of Conservation and Development.
All right, a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. And the second portion of this, we'll just leave on the table for now. And with the understanding that we'll have some comments that we would like to attach to the motion that we make on November 18.
Right, we have, actually, a per state statute of commons and a recommended changes, which have a little more specificity, I think.
Okay, all right. All right, so I think we're all set with item number one under Old Business. Now we can move to item two, the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail. What's the latest update regarding that?
Well, I would, Mr. Chairman, if I could, also, you have, also should have a email from Mr. Bill Hogan with some maps and outlines, where there's, trying to convey and with the help of Mark Devoe on the alignment for South Washington Route 177, knowing that there is some hurdles and issues there, to try and look at what they had previously, which was an alignment that would take it behind Hemingway. And we look at, had them look at another alternative. And so this is Mr. Hogan's response email back to that, which it doesn't, on the face of it, appear to be favorable. And again, I would say that it is a dialogue that will continue. You know, clearly, there are concerns with where this, you know, final alignment would go. And so I'll let you, again, I, my suggestion would be that you might consider leaving this on the table as well, because there's a lot to digest here. And I also want to say my apologies. I was hoping that I could fool the members tonight before the meeting started, before we realized we didn't have nothing here tonight. So I wanted to say that they are looking to talk to us about coordinating the November walk and audit, if you will, of the corridor and the alignments. And they wanted to know if we could start earlier. And we're looking at now, the date of the 20th was an option, and I think that's the one we zeroed in on, if we could start at 12:30, so as to get enough daylight for us, because we're not voting in the dark.
What was the date of that?
I believe it's November 20.
Oh, that's right, if we gave them.
Yeah, I thought there was.
If you do that, please, so maybe.
Yeah, I'll redo that, yeah. So anyway, it's just, it was in the original dates, but now looking at the 20th, the 12:30 start versus the, I think we had a 2 o'clock start.
From Norton Park?
At Norton Park, yeah, beginning at Norton Park, yeah.
Okay.
I'll have Lisa resend that. So, yeah, with that, that would be my recommendation that, because I think that walk will be enlightening and will be helpful. Because, you know, there's something to the fact that when you're walking, there's so much more you can observe and take in than you would. I mean, I know you travel the roadway all the time, right? But, you know, there's a certain pedestrian speed, and that you don't pick up on a map or a visual. But if you're walking it, I think there's a lot we're going to learn.
Maybe we should get bikes and pedal it.
Oh, this is out of my way.
Well, we want to be safe, so we're going to walk, I think a little bit safer. And we'll see, we'll see if we're ready for biking, maybe.
But, yeah, I'm fine. I think it sounds like we need to have, you know, maybe your staff, we need to have some follow-up with the state on this and continue some discussion. So I'm fine leaving it on the table for now until we can have more discussion.
Okay.
I think we all agree with you on that.
Okay, all right. All right, item number three, our letter to the D E P regarding the ReWorld permit request.
Yes, and if I may, Mr. Chairman, it had asked that I talk with Ken, I did, from the Tropical Resource Recovery Facility. And he had given some input on that and suggested that, take out the reference that they have, you know, in a lawsuit with another company in terms of another location, not the Bristol location. So he just thought it probably muddied the waters since, I think they, they, they curailed. And it's on appeal kind of thing, so I think that was good advice. So that was modified within the letter to take that out. And, you know, I think it closely mirrors the legislation. It can be in the resolution, but not exactly. But I think you can wordsmith whatever you like. It is not, you know, this is just, again, my effort to try and clean it up a little bit and get it into the book camp. So you can take it wherever you'd like to go.
Yeah, any comments or questions? I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanted to counsel, I'm still opposed to this project. I feel it should not go in. I think the council felt the same way a few weeks ago. I think we took a vote. And then we decided to hold up on the vote after that gentleman spoke to us last meeting. But quite honestly, I'm still opposed to it, yeah.
This motion though? If I may, this motion is in opposition, Dave. So, okay, just so you're clear, okay?
And just before I, I asked for a motion to take this off the table. The fact that, do we have to put in here that the resolution and the letter, like, do we have to reference the letter that we're sending, the letter to the D E P? And this, I.
You know, we just.
I don't believe so. Okay. Well, just, yeah, and I just want for clarification, we're passing a resolution, but then we are also sending a letter to the D E P regarding, you know, the public hearing.
You mean, you're going to sign the letter, Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I don't think that, I think that would be within his purview as long as he has a consensus.
Yeah, and I think we do, we have a consensus on sending the letter, so we're all set.
Yeah, like, we, for your packet, we set it up in such a way that you, Mr. Chairman, were signing on behalf of the council. And this letter would accompany each resolution.
Okay.
By way of, you know, further explanation, pretty much, so, you know, here is.
All right.
Yeah, so the letter woke up.
Yes, the letter woke up.
You know, I do agree, because there are some things in the letter, I think, which make things a bit clearer. You know, especially about the, you know, I think I commented at the last meeting, it was a little misleading in the resolution about the lack of continuous emissions monitoring. You know, and lax can mean either totally without or insufficient. And it was a little, the way, it was in the context, a little misleading. The letter makes it very clear, however, that it's insufficient, so.
Okay, all right, so is there a motion to remove this from the table?
So move, motion to remove.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, it is off the table. Would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Gettle.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution entitled Resolution Opposing the Collection and Incineration of Biomedical Waste by ReWorld in the Town of Bristol.
Second.
Motion in a couple seconds. Any other comments or questions? I know we've talked about this for a couple meetings now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, so we are actually up to item 11, New Business. And if there are anyone that cares to make a motion on item number one?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Underwood.
Motion to approve hidden in plain sight as the Plainville tagline in the logo design process.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Did we discuss that we needed to make sure it wasn't a trademark? Or that we need to add the name Plainville in front of hidden in plain sight?
That's correct. Do you want me to rephrase the motion?
Or if you could just say pending review of the trademark and. That's all I got right now, that's all.
Pending a motion to be approved pending a review of hidden in plain sight as the Plainville tagline in the logo design process.
Second.
Okay, I think that one, that sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tompkins.
No problem.
All, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number two.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Christopher.
Motion to cancel the November 4, 2024 regular town council meeting.
Second.
Motion in a second. And again, just for clarification, with this is the night before election day, typically don't hold a meeting. If there is something that comes up, we always have the opportunity for a special meeting during that week to take care of any business. And the town manager and his staff will let us know if that needs to happen, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item number three.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Tompkins.
Motion to award bid number 2025-10 non-traded road salt under state contract number 20PSX-0085 to Morton Salt, Chicago, Illinois, in the important amount not to exceed $54,352.
Motion in a second, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number four.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Tompkins.
Motion to award bid 2025-11 treated road salt under capital reach in purchasing council bid number 765 to Morton Salt, Michigan, Chicago, Illinois, for the amount not to exceed $35,092.
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item number five.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Hurley. Go ahead.
All right. I lost track. Oh. Sewer manholes? Oh, okay. Motion for bid 2025-12 sewer manholes to Prime Electric LLC, Norwich, Connecticut, under state contract number 24PSX0243 in the amount of $39,150.
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item number six.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Gettle.
Motion to approve and authorize the town manager to execute the Memorandum of Understanding Amendment Number One for Manafort Newport Realty LLC.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Wait.
Any comments or questions? A question?
Yes, what does that have to do with what we've discussed about the high school?
Nothing. That's the White Oak project.
This is the White, yeah, this is the White Oak, the property behind West Main Street.
Apologize.
Nope, that's all right. All right, any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item number seven.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Hurley.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, other discussions of interest. Is there anything else to talk about tonight?
Just one brief item, Andy touched upon it, and that was the early voting. And the numbers I had, 239, is that correct? I think 239.
When I left at 5:00 p.m., it was 216, so it could be close. And I'm hearing that there were roughly in the state, just about 40,000.
40,000, right.
40,000 in the state.
38,000 in the first five hours total.
Yeah, for the first day.
I had someone touch me. I had someone touch me for the early work.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so you're.
So, again, we'll do our part in promoting and educating as much as we can about the process. But again, we need some social media, we'll put that out there. But I think, you know, it's.
It was a steady day.
Yeah.
It was a steady day.
Very, very numbers.
Your video was great. Yeah, I shared it everywhere.
It went smoothly, yeah. We had a few glitches with some vault doors and some computers, but we got through.
No, it's a process. It's an evolving process. Nobody likes everything to work 100% the first day.
It was fantastic. Fantastic.
Why I go, it's not easy. All right, anything else, any other discussions of interest? No, we have no executive session scheduled this evening, so a motion to adjourn?
So, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned. Make sure you get out and vote, everyone, and we'll see you on November 18.